Council will call them in order for the record. It is March first, 2022 at four thirty two P. M. We'll begin this city council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burn.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second motion?
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agendas published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next up is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move on to item number eight under department commission reports. First item up is a license agreement between the City of Meridian and Concept Investments LLP. And I will turn this over to Mr. Barton.
Good afternoon, the mayor and council members. In October of twenty twenty one, we were here in front of you discussing a project, possible project to beautify one of the remnant parcels on Meridian Road. This idea was brought to us, so we kind of looked into it and talked to the owner and they were receptive of that, so. And council gave us direction to trudge forward on this. And so that's what we did. Legal department prepared a license agreement. And we presented that to the owner. We finally got it back on Janu- January fourteenth. And so we're bringing that to you this evening for approval.
Thank you. Council questions for staff? Maybe one, Mike, just for the record. What do we intend on doing with the property?
Yep. So that that leads us into the next item. If you want to take them both at the same time, I can just keep right on going.
Yep.
So at that time when we talked about this project, it was, the cost was discussed. And then we also discussed on the timing and that we could run it through the budget process. And if that was the case, then we couldn't actually execute the project till the spring of twenty three, whereas if we brought forward a budget amendment that we could do the project this spring and kind of lock in the cost that we, the costs that we received at that time. So council's direction was to bring back not only the license agreement, but a budget budget amendment of forty five thousand dollars. So that's what we're doing. And I will answer any questions you have.
And this will just be primarily for grass?
Correct. Yeah.
Council, any additional questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Strater, I assume you want us to approve the agreement and then the budget amendment in two separate actions? Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Move we approve the license agreement between the City of Meridian and Concept Investments LLP for landscape improvements and maintenance.
I have a motion, a second to approve item eight. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agreement is agreed to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Move that we approve a fiscal year twenty two budget amendment in the amount of forty five thousand dollars for Meridian Road Island beautification. Second, the motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve item nine. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burn.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes and the item is agreed to. Thank you, Mike.
We're on it. Thank you.
Next item up is item ten, community development, U six road center median options. I'll turn this over to Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A little theme here this afternoon. We're going to talk about beautification of another corridor in the center of the road on U stick. So there are some options. Let me provide a little bit of background information. Parametrics was contracted with Ada County Highway District this last year and completed a concept study for the first mile of U stick roadway that's up for widening west of Linder Road, so between Linder and Ten Mile. Part of that concept, the preferred alternative from that concept includes widening U stick from two lanes to one in each direction, to two lanes in each direction with a center median where there isn't a center median, so the left-hand turns can be made. ACHD is designing in some eleven-foot wide concrete medians. They will also be putting in some, a vertical barrier, so wrought iron fencing or something similar, probably thirty-six inches to provide some vertical obstruction. So the medians are being included really largely solely for transportation-related purposes. If they didn't put something in the center median, they would likely have to sign the speed limit of the corridor at forty-five or fifty miles an hour because it would just be, feel like a racetrack, straight and not a lot of access points to conflict with somebody going, again, in excess of thirty-five or forty miles an hour. So they're putting the center median in there, trying to make it feel like you should drive slower. So there's a lot of psychology in the, in the transportation engineering practice. So part of the discussion was if, if the city chooses to do nothing, we will basically get concrete or asphalt, likely a concrete center median with, again, some vertical barriers, a split rail or a wrought iron fence type of a thing to provide that vertical relief and obstruction. What I thought I would take to you, and this is similar to Miranda Carson, last year, I had a similar request on a corridor, and I can never remember if it was Lake Hazel or Eagle, but in that area to look at one of those corridors to potentially landscape the center median instead. This is a largely residential part of our, our community. Personal opinion, it would, it would look a lot nicer. It would, it would look more premier. To landscape this, put, put a little bit of life in there. It wouldn't be so sterile. There is landscaping on the sides on most all of the subdivisions that are there. Bridge Tower is a large subdivision that's on the north side in this mile seg- segment. But long story short, this, I'm here asking you if you'd like to invest in the corridor, invest in some landscaping and really the long-term maintenance of that. Let me run you through the corridor a little bit. This is also included in the memo that I prepared, but I think it'll probably show up a little bit better on your screens than on an eight and a half by eleven. So this is starting on the western boundary of the project at Ten Mile Road. So I'm going to go from west to east, kind of in the concept. Can everybody see that? It looks like it's on the screen. Make sure the full pages are. Just as a quick aside, one of the things we're talking with them as well is the ability to make a U-turn at this location because you put those center medians in. If you miss your turn, there's really not a whole lot of opportunities to go back. And those center medians, again, prohibit left turns in certain locations. So this is the concept level. It isn't the ultimate design. That's, that's what we're getting ready to do is take that concept design that Parametrics did. And TO engineers is actually working with that, with the highway district on, on designing this project for construction. So likely the ability to make a U-turn at this intersection. So this segment, sorry, I gotta move pictures around. There's one smaller median in this area. In total, there are six different segments of these medians, approximately nineteen hundred linear feet. So again, eleven feet wide by nineteen feet in length in six different segments. This is one of the smaller segments. I think it'll be a little bit more evident in the next slide. There's a county parcel right here that still has full access. So that's one of the reasons this median can extend further. Is there is that county parcel where full access needs to be maintained, at least in the interim. You can see their driveway here. So these, on the western side, ideally, you'd have a longer run of median here, but to preserve the access points for these two right now anyways, it's being designed with those three smaller segment medians that could potentially be landscaped. There is a new traffic signal, again, sort of on the side, not necessarily wine before you today, but they will be signalizing the Tower Bridge Way intersection that goes into Bridge Towers. This is the collector roadway that feeds in to the Bridge Tower project. This median isn't subject to the landscaping that I'm talking to you about. There would be, this would be a refuge area that if someone weren't able to make the full crossing, they could pause here and do a two-phase crossing as a pedestrian to get all the way across the street. So most of pedestrians would likely cross in this location. Again, a signal as part of the project. And then we do get some of the larger runs of the medians. So again, we've done a pretty good job. I think the Five Mile Creek helps with that. Not too many bridges for access points, but only one access point here. So there's really not a reason to have the center turn lane. No one's turning left or right here because there's nowhere to turn to. Two longer turns here, two longer medians here. And then we're to the recently improved intersection at Linder Road. So the scope of this project would tie in to the work that was done. Again, the existing lender U stick intersection is it's in its ultimate configuration. So that medium would, would end here. Those longer medians, I think, were in the neighborhood of six to seven hundred feet, so pretty substantial. And again, the three on the, on the west were substantially smaller. So depending on, on the level of design and the materials installed, I did some, some rough estimates with Mike, but just kind of made some assumptions that if we, if we were to put in some landscaping with some trees, some shrubs, some rock mulch with an irrigation system would cost around seventy-five dollars per linear foot or approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this mile segment. That's just to design and install, improve this with something other than that hardscaping I was talking about. Further annual maintenance costs are estimated about five thousand dollars. I will pause and just say that one fifty number is a pretty rough estimate. You know, today's dollars with today's, you know, and this project would, this, this isn't scheduled to be on construction until twenty twenty five. So they're designing it this year, would do right away next year, and then construct in twenty twenty five. So who knows how much a tree is going to cost in a couple of three years or the shrubs or the irrigation or the labor to install those things. But again, in today's dollars, that's a pretty, pretty good estimate anyways. And same with maintenance. Who knows what our maintenance contract looks like? We can control some of that, but we would hope to design, design something that is fairly low maintenance. And that's actually part of, I'm jumping ahead a little bit. I did talk about this with our Transportation Commission. Punchline, they are generally supportive of this, but they do want to do something that is virtually no maintenance or very low maintenance in, in a design. That is ultimately their recommendation to you. But we would have to go out to bid. I will also note here, typically ACHD does require a partner agency, so a city, an urban renewal agency, another government-related partner to pay for the design and the installation costs. In this scenario, I'm pretty confident, I don't want to jinx us, but I'm pretty confident I can convince them because they're putting these median ends for a transportation need. They have to have these in there to, again, sign the corridor to an ideal speed limit for them in a residential district on an arterial. Basically, it's a wash for them. They're going to have to, if they hardscape this in concrete, they're going to be spending roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars anyways. So instead of spending that money on concrete, put it towards the installation, the design installation of the irrigation, a couple of trees and shrubs. If the city is willing to maintain it. I know they don't want to maintain. So it's not a full package deal. They aren't, if, if we can convince them to put in this material, we still have to at least commit to the maintenance, if not the design, the installation and the maintenance. So there's kind of a, the question to you ultimately is, are we interested in partnering with the highway district and does that change anything? Are we only willing to partner with ACHD if they're willing to, to put in landscape materials? Or if worst case, are we willing to design, install and maintain the landscape materials here? So that's one of the questions, and I guess one, the main question. Just a little bit more context. So from staff's perspective, and this was part of our presentation to the Transportation Commission as well, I see a real opportunity here. Kind of a bigger picture zooming back out. If you look at State Highway sixteen coming in, there's going to be an interchange there. And anyone getting off at U sticks that wants to come into Meridian, I think there's an opportunity. I'm not asking you to commit future councils to doing something similar in the next two miles to the county line. But there is an opportunity, I think, in this corridor to have a boulevard feel, welcome to Meridian, and, and set this corridor out as something special in our community. You know, U stick back to the east, the next mile to the east was recently widened, and we didn't put medians in there. I think there's even, even further, we could potentially even retrofit that corridor and do something similar that, which brings you to Meridian Road and could have a four-mile of a major arterial. U stick road is a major thoroughfare that kind of sets us apart. Again, I'll use the premier word again, potentially. Again, I'm not having you commit to that, but I, there's some vision involved in this conversation. This isn't just a one-off mile segment where we put some medians in. There'd be some level of understanding that we would at least have a conversation about the next mile to the, to the west, and then the third mile to the west, which gets us to the county line. So we, we aren't committing to that, but that's at least some of the thought process. If you say no to this one, I don't, I, I don't see us doing it for the other two miles, probably. We can ask you again if you'd like next year when that mile is designed, but that's kind of the thought process. So one more, one more thing, and then I'll look for questions or feedback. That next mile, so west of Ten Mile to Black Cat is also going into design and should be complete in twenty-three as well with construction shortly after. And then the third mile, Black Cat to McDermott or State Highway sixteen is planned for design by ACHD in twenty twenty-six. So these three miles are going to be designed back to back to back. The construction of that last mile is unfunded right now, so I don't know when they'll actually construct that, but they're going to design all three of these in the next three years. So I think with that, I already mentioned that the Transportation Commission supports landscaping the center medians with a preference towards lower maintenance materials. And with that, I will stand for any questions, feedback, direction you want to give.
Thank you, Caleb. Council, questions, comments, feedback?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Caleb, and I know some of these questions might be more appropriate for ACHD, and I just want to start up high and then we'll go granular. Is, it, when I first opened the packet and read this, I was just shocked to see medians in this area. So you answered one of the questions. That is, they are going to do it from the western end. I, I've never seen this part of the road. I live on this road, just off this road, as being the gateway to Meridian. I mean, that's just not, not a deal. And, and, and people are coming down Ten Mile and they're coming down Linder access points and whatnot, river crossings, the whole bit for, for those roads. And then McMillan, of course, to the north, and then, and Chindon. The, one of the things that I'm concerned about, especially here with the picture that you've got up, you've got Five Mile Creek on the right-hand side on the north side there. And then you've got Tumble Creek down here farther for, for maintenance staff to get out there if we do any weeding and whatever, irrigation repair. That's, that's a tough stretch because there are no sections. I mean, it's, you've got the creek on one side and you do have the sidewalk on the other. But that's a long, tough stretch. It's kind of like parts of Ten Mile up there at the interchange where you're, you're kind of out there on your own and it's, the safety is, you know, they, they do it right, but at the same time, there's always that, that concern, someone's not paying attention. So that, that makes me a little concerned about that. And that kind of makes me lean towards more of a hardscape than, I mean, I mean, we want it pretty, but at the same time, it's just, it's added cost on our end of things. Caleb, one thing I wanted to find out, there's going to be a ten-foot path on the south side of U stick road here?
So, Mr. Mayor, Council President, actually ten-foot path on both sides. So some of it exists. So in what I've still got on the map, right, the, the existing pathway is a little bit off because of the creek and some of those slopes. They're going to continue to use the pathway here, but let me go to the next segment. But I, the typical section includes ten-foot pass on both sides. So that's the multi-use pathway that ACHD is moving towards on pretty much all their capital projects these days.
Wow. Because there is an existing sidewalk, Mr. Mayor, Caleb, you know, where it's red, that's the existing sidewalk that, that exists. I, I really wonder because that creek, and I know they're going to put in a barrier and coming across, they're going to have to take a lot of that, that meeting, meeting area or the, you know, extra area which was left when, fortunately, in these areas, Meridian planned well and said, okay, here's going to be the setback for future expansion, but it's still going to be a lot. I'm, I'm thinking that ten foot is going to be right up to their fence. It's going to be very, very close. Again, that's more of an ACHD thing than, than our thing.
Mr. Mayor, Council President, if you want to just spend a second there, I can walk you through that a little bit more. So here's a typical for this section. So yeah, the Turtle Creek and, and this Glenfield Way area, we've done a better job. And you can see what's going to be left after the project, about nineteen and, a little over nineteen feet to the fence line there. So actually, in this segment, pretty good still. There's over twenty-five feet there now, so we do lose some of that, but that, that existing sidewalk is being removed. Ten-foot pathway with a six-foot buffer and then the travel lane. So in this, in this segment, you're good. If we go a little bit further to the west, though, it does get pretty tight here. So this is the subdivision. If you look at the typical there, we're three point eight feet away from that fence line. The existing sidewalk is going to be removed in favor of that ten-foot wide pathway, but this is the most constrained. So for these eight, nine homes that are there, that pathway does come pretty darn close to their, that their backyard or their fence line. I just wanted to, it does vary a little bit on the corridor, I guess, but we, we looked at that and, and the, and the ten-foot wide pathway.
Let's go back to that other slide as we, as we go to the west. I noticed they're putting in a new crossing at Five Mile Creek up here. What I find interesting, there was a triangle spot there. I, I was surprised at that because now if we go to the next slide, again, go west, the entrance to Tower Bridge Way accesses the five-mile pathway. And and then just right there where your pointer is, right there is a bridge I helped build back in, it had been a wood structure. We put in the concrete that was strong enough to let milk trucks, old milk trucks go across because up there to the north was my father-in-law's dairy. So I, I'm thinking, I, I know we, that's private property to some degree. A lot of it's irrigation right away. I, I, and, and so people are going to take this sidewalk to nowhere, heading east on that north side. And then if you go back and then access that, that new bridge. And, and I, I just, and see the sidewalk does not continue. I, I was just surprised they didn't, even if they don't use that actual, the bridge. actual, the bridge we built, but not go down Tower Bridge just to that point. If we go back up, just make up to the next slide again. So where it says North Tower Bridge Way, right there, you can see it where it's where it goes out of the picture. You see the pathway. Yeah. Right, right there. And that's a crosswalk and the whole bit. I'm just surprised they don't have people go follow that to the access to pathway instead of building a new bridge. I mean, money is money.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Council President Hogan. A little bit of that on that. So again, this, what you're looking at here is the preferred concept. They haven't gotten to that level of design. And this is preferred concept. So some of those conversations need to still happen with the irrigation district, a little more study of the existing bridge. So it's not a done deal that a new bridge replaced that bridge. I think some of why it's in the preferred option for that though, is what we kind of alluded to before, and that the pathway serves as the de facto sidewalk and getting people back in corridor almost as soon as possible, rather than having them go away from where they want, you know, the sidewalk paralleling the road instead of having to feed everybody either into Bridge Tower or away from. I think that was some of the thought process. Why talk to the irrigation district at least, see if a new bridge, it's going to be costly for them to your point. So I'm not holding my breath that this is a new bridge. I guess that's my disclaimer. That this is a preferred alternative. That existing bridge may, may function fine and may stay. This was something to trigger that discussion and see if it does make sense to build a new bridge.
Thanks for that, that background on that, Caleb. Appreciate that. And let's just jump one more to the, to the, to the west, Corey Stone Way. We have that. Just for people's information, Corey Stone Way, and then the county sub, it's now in the city. That's to the, to the west here. Shafers live in that property that's open. They have stub streets just off the screen on both sides that will access that property when that develops someday. So, and, and same with the property on the south side. They've got a stub street, I think, yeah, back there and, and access point for, for that. So that will work.
And again, sorry to interrupt again, Council President, but that is again, to today's situation, I, I envision this median being larger because access to those prop parcels you just called out will be internal and hopefully we can limit. You know, but for today, we need to provide them with an access to used to, because that's historically what they've enjoyed.
And, and to that point, Caleb and this mayor, the making those longer, again, we're in a heavily traveled corridor and having staff find a way to where to park to get out there to access that, that's just a, that's just a good way. It's going to be, you know, all the way, if they do this all the way down, down Eustick. So that makes it a little more, more difficult, but.
So Mr. Mayor, Councilman President, a little bit, a little bit more on that. And Mike and I were on the, the team actually at the Meridian Road Interchange and we designed in some of those pullout areas for maintenance vehicles as well. So there are some spots that are strategically designed into something. So there may be some hardscape areas still within these medians that you can pull a truck and trailer up in potentially, and they can, you know, pull their toders up there with them as they trim stuff off. But again, we are really trying to have these be lower maintenance. So maybe a few times a year, I don't, don't quote me on that, but, but again, not, certainly not out there every week mowing lawn. Something that's a lower maintenance where spring and fall go and trim things up type of a thing and maybe the garbage every once in a while, but we haven't gotten that level. But I will just say, I mean, you mentioned it 10 mile that we do thoughtfully need to think about that. And I'm glad you brought it up because there is a safety concern and we need to have pullouts for their trucks because there's not a shoulder here for them to pull in. And we don't want them up on the multi-use pathway type of thing. So if we move forward, that will be a consideration. We'll ask them to design in.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and Caleb. That's a good point that we, we have to keep the safety. It's one of those things. Love to see them landscaped and look beautiful because that's my street, local street, if you will, my local arterial. But at the same time, if safety is a concern, then let's not, let's not do that. But if we can design it in a way that keeps our, our workers safe and, and by all means, then we should, we should do that. I don't think I had anything further to the west. If you want to go to that. Yeah, that was a county subdivision that came in. So if you see houses that are all vinyl, that's, that's why wasn't our choice at the time. So, and then they, when the other subdivision came in, they, they just matched. That is a difficult intersection to get in and out of the way it is that close to, close to 10 miles. So it is what it is. But, and that one does have have a, a little bit of a, no, it doesn't, not yet. No medium yet. So, yeah, it's a, just was a surprise to see that out there. It used to be a country road. And if I were to give you the story, that was where, when you took driver's training in school, they would take you out, once you learn the basics of operating a car and would take you down Eustick Road right there to, to lanes, country road, no guardrails and five mile creek right there. That was the white knuckle moment. They took beginning drivers to make sure, can they handle it? Are they going to panic and drive this car into the ditch? So, uh, so a lot of kids talked about how scary that was to them because it was right there and no guardrail. So.
Councilman Hogan, I think when the city council gets over, we got something for you on historic preservation. Real, real quick, what for the, for the record, Councilman Borton joined us at 4:56 PM. Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. Thanks, Caleb. I guess a question I had in terms of to totally agree on trying to get the long-term maintenance cost of this down if we were to move forward. I, I, it's just some feedback. If our transportation professionals are recommending this as something that's needed to get the speed to a reasonable level. I understand that. I'd be curious. What's the difference in long-term maintenance costs between like, you know, a boulevard with trees versus something that has more just like zero escaping? I'm thinking about like, there's kind of a very strange looking around about near hill road as you go to bogus, but it has some really beautiful zero escaping. And I think, you know, we live in a desert. Hopefully it wouldn't take much water, if any water, maybe native plants. And if it's something that low maintenance, could we really cut down on the maintenance cost? If we went with something more like that as opposed to trees that had to be trimmed, just curious kind of what the options would be down the road.
Yeah, I'm going to have, Mike is here for some of that and I wouldn't do justice to any answer there.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Schrader. It's, it's a good question. I mean, I, I would say in this corridor that turf grass is definitely not an option just because of the frequency and the type you have to unload equipment and it, it's just not very practical. But you know, the zero escaping refers to maybe a low water consumptive plant material that is you know, as far as maintenance, it's probably not any less than typical shrubs. I don't see shrubs out there. Like you, you wouldn't be there with shearing hedges and that kind of stuff, but trees and, and plants that are well suited for the, for our environment and our climate would be more appropriate. I think that, you know, you do what you can with to reduce the, at least the frequency of maintenance. And, and maybe it's a two times a month type visit. And then the spring and fall, you, you do a cleanup or a cut down or something like that. One of the, one of the, probably the, the biggest maintenance considerations for this would be the, the amount of repair that it needs because it, it seems like on 10 mile, 10 mile road, just before the interchange, and you don't even know why or when or how it happened, but there's always tire tracks in there. And it's like somebody, somebody doesn't see stop traffic and they bail out and they, they go in the landscaping. So there is some of that. But lo- long-term and, and to the safety point, I think that the crews would pull up. Well, first of all, we contract these out. This would be one of those sites. It wouldn't be city crews maintaining this, but they would likely pull up in the center turn lane right before the median and just park and get out and walk it and get back in the truck. If there was a major cut down or cleanup, like a spring and fall kind of thing, they would probably do that either on a Saturday or well, not even early in the morning. It would probably be a Saturday. Just, just to get in there and get it done and get out of the way.
Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mike, since you're up here, I guess kind of a question about trees. If I, my memory is correct, after a certain period of time, don't we take out mature trees and then kind of replace them with less mature trees? I feel like that we did that in downtown a few years ago. And so I guess if we, if we plant something, it's, it's there really in theory temporarily.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh. In, in a, an 11 foot wide planter strip where there's enough soil volume to accommodate the root system, th- these would be in there long-term. And the only reason we did that downtown is because we were stuffing trees in a six foot by six foot box. So these would, these trees, you know, theoretically, they're going to be allowed to be there and mature and, and you can keep them limbed up so they don't get you know, block sightlines and that kind of stuff. So totally appropriate.
So Caleb, a question from a practical standpoint, the stuff that's further on the west where you really don't have any connectivity to items, is a thought that you would do the half now of this road that has, you could actually do something with in the other half later, when those county parcels redevelop and you can do a complete median through those areas. It seems, it seems to be very awkward and weird to do something in that existing space. Personally, but yeah.
So just to confirm, you're talking about these couple of parcels here or further west of 10 mile?
Just the ones, the ones that are showcased where we were, you have a little period, then you have an open space for an access, then you have another one that you had an open space. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to do that later when that area redevelops?
So yeah, we, we should ask Mr. Hogan what, when he thinks those properties are going to develop, knock on your neighbor's door and see, because I would, I, I'm going to just guess that those, I mean, those parcels are ripe for additional development there. And I honestly, in the next couple of years, by the time they get to construction, they may have preliminary plots on them to, to redevelop. And that's really how we're kind of approaching this with ACHD is this is short-term. So if we wanted to enter into something now and say, you know what, let's not make the investment in these little things because it's going to be, you know, a bigger thing in the future and do a separate agreement with ACHD potentially then, instead of something here that needs to be retrofitted in the future. That could be, be part of the conversation because I don't disagree with you. It looks, it looks a little odd here. I'm also hopeful to some degree that through, again, this is a concept plan. That through right away negotiations, we can even potentially work with those property owners to leave their existing accesses right and right out, construct a median, but also have them use the either a U-turn or use the stub streets to their property if they really want to turn left and get out to a signal. I, I can't guarantee that. We haven't had those conversations with those property owners. I hear what you're saying and I agree with you. I don't, I'm not necessarily a fan of how this is shown on the screen. I do think it would take some, you know, ideally would be retrofitted if not built with the center median initially.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, one last question.
Councilman Hogan.
Mike, Caleb there to Tower Bridge to the east, they show, they're showing greens on the north side. They're showing green right there. Yep. That's all rock right now. Just they put in gravel. That's, is that, I think that's part of the subdivision, would it not be? So was that fault of the HOA to maintain that?
Yeah, typically, Mr. Mayor, Council President Hogan. Yeah, when, so the, the, our ACHD policy and, and how we work with ACHD is when a subdivision has improved out to the existing right away, a landscape buffer, ACHD will, will what they call patch back essentially what was there before. So that will still be HOA property and, and maintained by the homeowners. But again, there is some negotiation with that and even the design of that will be coordinated to some degree with the HOA to, to patch back. I don't want to go too far down this road, but Eustick over by Locust Grove, between Locust Grove and Meridian. If you, if you look at that sometime, there is a mix mash of different things in that planter area between the sidewalk and the curb. Because different subdivisions wanted different things in those areas. So take the green with a little bit of salt there. Most subdivisions though, they want to maintain that look and not have just the two inch rock out there. They, there's some degree of pride, if you will, and they, they recognize they got to water it and maintain it, but that most people tend to say that's more attractive. But again, I don't know if this will actually be landscape materials, but it is owned and maintained by the HOA. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, I guess for some feedback, I'm more interested under the scenario where ACHD is helping to pay for the cost of it. You know, it feels like the motivation behind it is a transportation and safety related motivation. And I love beautification strategically in certain areas of Meridian. I think it helps us a lot with our property value and our, you know, premier community, but I do, I do think it's worth pursuing that agreement with ACHD and trying to convince them.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, a question for you or for, for Caleb. What does our community think about these? I mean, is this something that they say is important? Is it something they say is nice to have? Is it? Is it a priority of theirs? Do they, I mean, I think some people don't notice them. I think some people sometimes struggle with like, oh, this is getting in the way of my ability to go 50 miles an hour down the road. I'm just trying to get a flavor for what our citizens think about this type of stuff. If you got feedback or?
I don't think we've ever had any comment except around the ones in downtown. I will refrain comment from what those comments are about the ones in downtown. Cause I think it, it, it varies greatly by who you speak to, and there's not a consensus about their aesthetic value. I think they definitely do what they're accomplished, set out to do and slow people down and everyone recognizes that element. But otherwise I have not had a request for people to, you know, most people complain about the weeds that are growing in places that are not up kept more so than having or not having landscape areas, boulevards, medians. Personally, I hadn't really thought about this till you mentioned it. It seems to me a hardscape fence that was done appropriately would be as, as nice of an amenity as grass or something else with less maintenance. And quite frankly, based upon the costs that I mentioned, I would think less cost. I don't know that though, if, but if, especially if ACHD is already looking at putting some sort of decorative fence structure. Yeah, that almost seems like as good of a option as anything else in a lot of ways. My cost and maintenance and everything else, Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, I, I tend to agree. Well, I think it sounds like the ongoing maintenance is fairly low considering. I do kind of come from a place where simple, the better. I think trees, understanding that they could be there long-term would make sense too, but a fence or a decorative art piece, something that doesn't require a lot of ongoing maintenance or support, something I'd be more supportive of.
Mr. Mayor, if I can maybe just add a little bit more to, to your answer to Councilman Cavanagh, although it doesn't, this isn't citywide. I do want to put this back into perspective, this project a little bit. So ACHD again, with a concept plan, there are two alternatives, again, for the first time for you. Because of the five mile creek, there's really a split option and I, I hovered there, but I didn't really call it out what they're doing with retaining wall. It's a pretty intense retaining wall. They were initially looking at saving some dollars and putting that retaining wall back kind of over here where this travel lane was and really scrunching that, this landscape buffer over here. And to their credit, they got some feedback from some of the neighbors. But some of their public involvement process for the concept plan was done, done in the heat of COVID. And so they didn't have any in-person, they sent emails and had some virtual open houses. Some of the feedback that, that Councilman Cavanagh was just asking about will come as they get further into design here and reach out to particularly Bridge Tower and some of the adjacent. So I'm not talking citywide. What do we think about this? But these neighbors that are most directly impacted, there will be some feedback. So we're at a stage right now where ACHD is asking, is the city, is there any level of interest from the city in potentially greening these up? With the caveat that, yeah, they still have to design it and go out to the public and get some of that feedback as well. Now they aren't going to do it under the guise of the city, but they were still, if, if, if the initial design from ACHD shows of them being landscaped and people like, why are we wasting money on trees? ACHD may go, hey, we're getting a bunch of feedback on what a waste it is to put trees out there. So that is part of the next steps in the process, but they need to know earlier if, if there's any level of interest or if the concept should show concrete with a wrought iron fence. They probably won't do artwork, just telling you that they, if that's another like upgrade, right? The baseline, what we'd get is probably some orangish red, pink stamped concrete out there with a wrought iron fence. That's what we'll, we'll get. And, and if that's what everyone is fine with, then that's fine. But there is an opportunity to again, I, I, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. again, I, I, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but to dress it up a little bit.
And I think that I'm not going to downplay the fact that we have our two chiefs here this evening. Honestly, I thought we'd hear more from public safety about, especially if we start putting things in the middle that prevent or slow down or hamper the ability of public safety moving around traffic through areas. Um, definitely has been the case on Eagle Road. We've heard that before. They didn't want any landscaping on Eagle Road. Um, so that they could traverse when necessary. I would assume that any place we talk about these, that becomes a potential issue. Um, and that might be, I don't know, Kent, Mr. Wood, if you've had any conversation with public safety on this, if they've, yeah, I know you have somebody at the Transportation Commission, but, um, I, I would not maybe almost start back with them and say, is what should be our standard and your expectations?
So, so Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. Uh, I am trying to recall if, if Chief Bonjourno has been part of this conversation. It seems like he's aware of it. I, I've talked to him, but I haven't mountable curbs and I, I can bring that up certainly with, with fire and then bring that back to ACHD. I don't know how much stocks are going to put in that because they have to have something vertical in these. Again, not to be a broken record, but to sign this at a residential arterial speed, the, the, the medians in Eagle Road, that signed at 55 miles an hour, as you know. So if they were to put up vertical things, or then they could sign that at 35 or 40 miles an hour. But I can bring that up and we, we can coordinate some more on that. Um, at least express the concern to ACHD and say, hey, these should be hardscaped and mountable and fire trucks should be able to drive all the way down them. Um, if, if that's in, in fact, what fire, you know, uh, has concerns with. But right now, whether it's trees or, or a fence, that is something that gets in your line of sight, uh, vertical obstruction for motorists.
Yeah. And again, I don't know what the answer is.
It's a good point. I, I will coordinate with, with Chief Bonjourne a little bit more and see what concerns he may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, one more consideration. So I would assume if we would like to have this landscaping in there, it'll have been, maybe you don't know this yet. If the landscaping were damaged by vehicles, is it the city's responsibility to replace it? Or would be ACHD's responsibility to replace it? Cause my guess is if it's a fence, they'll, ACHD will replace it. If it's a tree, are they going to do the same thing?
So I, I am going to, with some assurance, agree with you on the first one, that if we're out, we don't have any obligations or responsibilities. If they're going to design in whatever they need to design in to sign it, whatever they need to sign it. Once we say, can you include this in your project? That's when now new rules that agreement gets to be written and your example of someone you know, pushing over a, a tree, I would guess would be on us. Um, but I have not done, we've done some similar things. Um, usually the landscaping is, we design it, we install it, we maintain it, including, and maybe we go, you know, through our insurance, iCrimp or something, go after that motors, but I think we're ultimately responsible for that.
Yeah, that, my, my only comment, Mr. Mayor, and just for consideration, I, those things generally are not real expensive. It is not likely most of the time that they're hit and runs. We usually know who did it. Usually able to, to collect on it and we're usually able to collect it back or iCrimp is able to collect it back. So from a cost standpoint, it's not, not a real concern because again, trees and rocks and bushes don't cost a whole lot of money compared to poles, giant flower pots, fences and those kinds of things. So I, I'm not concerned from that standpoint of replacement if needed, if these were to get hit. Um, again, they don't get hit a ton. I mean, there is some, but, uh, there isn't a lot of that, especially on a five lane road. But it just is another factor that is considered or it's going to be potentially some future cost, but possibly.
Yeah, it, it's only anecdotal, but I know the, our roundabouts down where I live have been hit. The lands, you know, there's damage, the landscaping. I'm trying to remember what we've seen on social media about people's viewpoints on landscaping or not about the Pine 43 roundabout, because there is a community expectation out there and I, I just can't remember from that standpoint. Yeah. The one question I was going to ask, are streetlights considered a vertical um, element if they were to go into the median to provide lighting down this corridor and or not necessarily?
So Mr. Mayor, um, roadway lighting, so typically ACHD's typical policy is to light the intersections and these medians are not at intersections. So potentially, and we don't have anybody from Public Works here, but potentially we're going to partner with ACHD to pro- to provide roadway lighting. So maybe there is a dual headlight that could go in the mid- middle of these that provides that roadway lighting, but I am not the roadway lighting expert on that. So, um, potentially, but it wouldn't be ACHD paying for that because they basically say we, we light intersections and
just trying to give them a vertical element that we can all be supportive of and, you know, they, they didn't used to do medians either, but now look at them in 10 foot pathways. Maybe they will change their tune on lights.
This is very, the only thing I would add on, on those, I mean, when you add lighting similar to the downtown islands, um, you're going to probably need more barriers to prevent them from getting hit. Cause those are a lot more expensive, um, to replace. So those are the, those add some cost to it. If you add that, I agree. It certainly provides a greater visual of there, but it certainly is an additional cost and expensive to get hit versus trees and bushes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Just maybe one thought, just sort of bigger picture. Um, it might, it might be nice at some point to get an agreement or just like an understanding of a cohesive citywide kind of approach to cases when we do landscape, just so they're consistent. I don't know if we're doing that, but um, I think to the extent that we are doing it, if it makes the city feel more cohesive and kind of a commonality to them, so that every single one isn't a totally different concept, I, I think that might be beneficial.
I, I think we have that for the size of the roads. This is the first time we're really being presented with this issue and then, and that's kind of what Caleb, the previous conversations were, if we, if, where do we want to do this if at all? And this is now becoming the, if we start doing this, what's it going to look like? So it is the precursor to that conversation to a certain extent.
Got it.
And on, honestly, counsel, I'm, I'm torn on whether or not there's value in doing these. I, I, I think that, you know, pow, or parkways that have separated areas with grass, with fences are, are really nice. I, I, you know, streets that you're driving on subdivisions. Again, I drive in a subdivision that's got trees in the median that are, that's perfect and great and love it. Um, just don't know if citywide, what makes the most appropriate sense to even implement in certain areas or not. So.
Mr. Mayor, just maybe to follow that, that thought and, and Councilman Schrader's question a little bit or, or request. You know, we won't read into this as being precedent setting for any other road projects that make, may, uh, contain center medians. We are going to come back to you on a corridor by corridor basis, hopefully not just mile by mile necessarily, but say, hey, there is a potential here anyways to do some of this. Um, maybe to, to lead you to some direction for staff. And if I'm not reading the tea leaves correctly, certainly you, you can let me know. Um, but I can just approach, again, we're fairly early in the process. I mean, it's moved along into the, through this stage, but um, I can approach ACHD saying there is some level of interest in some beautification here with an emphasis on low maintenance. Maybe figuring out what some of those details may look like, who, who is responsible in instances of a, a crash into something. Um, say, but we're not really interested. No. Quick aside, you know, taxpayer dollars, taxpayer dollars, city or ACHD, it's essentially coming from the same source. Um, but there could be some efficiencies though, if they, they trade out the concrete for some landscape material. I mean, there's still some hardscape. Maybe it's a combination of hardscape and some way to dress this up and say, but with city isn't interested in designing and installing all this, but maybe if ACHD is, uh, we would consider maintenance of that and then report back. We're not committing to anything. But start the negotiations there and then I can report back and say, hey, nope. ACHD says you need to design it, it needs to be all green and shrubs and 40 trees. We can say, well, just hardscape works then. I don't know. That, that's.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just want to make sure, because I, I've been told I talk a lot and never say anything. Um, that low maintenance or even a fence type of thing can, uh, is, is something I, I can, I can go for as well. It, it doesn't have to be elaborate. No trees, nothing major. It's something that we just have to figure out and, and, and make work, but just want to make sure, understood that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, my only strong preference is I hate non-functional turf. I just think it's a waste. Um, we are a city of trees. I think if, if they are really well suited to this and it would work, I'm, I'm into those. Um, if a fence works, that might be fine too. I don't have a super strong preference. I'm, I'm okay with you investigating it, kind of coming back.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, you know.
Councilman Hoagland.
Running for reelection in 2023, can we run on build the wall?
Caleb, do you, do you have enough to move back to further conversations?
No decision. I will investigate further and throw basically, hey, there's some level of interest. I recognize not everybody is, yep, we got to do something out there. Maybe their baseline is what we end up with, but let me see what, what level of partnership ACHD is looking at. And sorry, um, just one more. Yes, I think I've got direction. We'll also see what, if I can encourage them to really um, explore this further with, again, the neighborhoods that are adjacent as they go further into design and really get to see what the stakeholders would prefer out here. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. With that counsel, we've reached the end of our items. So I have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn on favor of 65 by saying I.
Hi.
Opposed me? Guys, have it, we are adjourned. Opposed me? Guys, have it. We are adjourned.
You
Council will call the media order for the record. It is March 1st, 2022 at 6:01 PM. We will begin tonight's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Leagues. If we'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next item is the community invocation, which will be delivered this evening by David Rice. Reese, I always get that one wrong. Sorry, David. If you would all join us in the community invocation and take this as a moment of silence for reflection.
Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful to begin this meeting this night with the request for thy blessings. We are grateful for those who devote their professional hours for the welfare of our community, for the mayor and council and staff, especially for our first responders. We ask thy blessings upon them and their families and associates. We ask thy blessings upon the proceedings this night, that all will be done for the welfare of our community. We ask thy blessings upon the weather, that we'll receive the moisture which we need to replenish our water table, our aquifers and reservoirs, and that our farmers will receive the moisture they need for their crops. And Heavenly Father, we especially and unitedly ask thy blessings upon those involved in the war in the Ukraine. We ask thy tender mercies upon the victims on all sides. We ask thy blessings on the leaders of nations, that their hearts will be softened for the benefits of their citizenries, and that wherever and however possible, peace will be prevailed. And we ask this unitedly in the name of thy Prince of Peace, thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Next up is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
If a motion is second to adopt the agenda, is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Corcoran, do we have anyone sign up under public form?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then we will move on to tonight's action items. First item up is a public hearing for Healthy Living Condominiums, SHP 2022-0001. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alan Tiefenbach, Associate Planer with Meridian, presenting this very simple short plat for Sanya this evening. So this is a short plat to condominiumize two areas within an existing building. Site is located south of Am, or excuse me, yeah, south of East Amity Road, east of Eagle Road. Property is zoned CN. There was already a condo plat that was done on this, Healthy Living Condominiums, and it was approved by, in 2017. What it did was it subdivided the airspace in this property that was YMCA building to allow ownership to be shared between YMCA and St. Luke's. You can see on the presentation here, the building, the existing building footprint. What this is doing is just additionally subdividing again airspace within the existing building. So this unit eight here would be one subdivision, and this unit nine here would be another subdivision. So again, it's just airspace within the existing buildings. This is for the purpose of allowing common areas and additional office space for St. Luke's and for the YMCA. But that staff believes it's in substantial compliance with the UDC, and I believe that the applicant is here to speak to this remotely if you have any other questions.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks, Alan. I guess my question is more around, I'm actually surprised that this requires a city council approval, and it's not like a staff level approval. You could just explain that to me.
Well, I don't know if I could explain it to you. Unfortunately, a short, it's part of the short plat process. Short plat process in our UDC requires a city council approval. Certainly, we support the city council, allowing us to do something like this administratively, but at present, we cannot do that.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Mr. Mayor, did you have anything to add to that?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so Idaho Code requires it because it is a division of land. Even though it is airspace, it still qualifies as a plat, which is a division of land, requires council.
Council, any additional questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here?
Good evening. Stephanie Hopkins of KM Engineering.
Hi, Stephanie. If you say your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Hopkins, 5725 North Discovery Way, Boise, E3713. I'm here on behalf of the YMCA. Alan did a really great job of summarizing our request. This is an existing building. We're looking to divide up extra airspace because they did a tenant improvement to kind of expand into the previous condo plat or the previous short plat. So now we're divvying up two extra units, eight and nine, that are shown on the plat, and we're going to be delineating five limited common areas as well. So those are shown in the kind of hatched areas on the plat, but the resulting condominium conforms to UDC requirements and is an existing building. So I'll stand up for any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Corcoran, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and provide testimony on this item? Or online, you can use the raise your hand feature if you're online. Seeing no one, would the applicant like to provide any final comments?
No, I don't think so. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, then with that, council, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I think we've all read the file. It looked really straightforward to me. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
If a motion is second to close the public hearing, I'm favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve file number SHP 2022-001 as presented at the staff report for today's hearing date.
I have a motion as second to approve SHP 2022-0001. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Byrne.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Okay, next item up is a public hearing continued from December 21st, 2021 for Black Cat Industrial Project H 2021-0064. I will turn this over to staff for any additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'll do kind of a quick summary about where we came, just for maybe the people that have shown up this evening, or to refresh everybody, including my memory. So this is an application for an annexation and zoning. Here are the maps. Property is about 130 acres. It's unincorporated. It's located, the majority of it is located on the west side of South Black Cat, south of Franklin. And there's a teeny little one acre piece of property, which you can see here on the other side of Black Cat. This project originally came to the council in December of 2021. It's a proposal to annex and rezone, again, about one acre of the property is R15. The applicant proposes to annex the remainder of the 129 acres to the west as IL. Applicant proposes to annex the one acre property in order to meet the contingency requirements of state law. The intent of this is to construct seven buildings ranging in size between 6,833,000 square feet. That's directly adjacent to Black Cat. And then there would be an additional nine larger buildings. Those are ranging in size between 131 to almost 300,000 square feet, with the total amount of square footage being close to 2 million square feet. Staff did not support this proposal based on the lack of conformance with the 10-mile plan, potential for load job generation, that it doesn't comply with the 10-mile plan, and most importantly, staff had concerns in regard to the lack of road infrastructure regarding this project. Planning Commission also recommended denial on this project. Just again, to refresh your memory, and basically, this was the layout that was proposed to council. So the smaller buildings that you see, these are directly adjacent to Black Cat, and then these would be the larger buildings ranging again from, I believe, 150 to 300,000 square feet. At, okay, so just to quickly talk about the road infrastructure, because this is really the purpose of why this was continued tonight. Black Cat currently is two lanes with no curb gutter or sidewalk. That is here. West Franklin, which is here, is presently two lanes with no curb and gutter here, and then it narrows down to just one lane each side west of Black Cat. Black Cat is due to be widened to five lanes in, between 2036 and 2040. West Franklin is planned to be widened to five lanes between 2026 and 2030. Staff, during our last presentation, we noted that in the staff report for tenant Meridian, the traffic study that was done found that the network in and around the 10-mile and the Franklin interchange was already failing, and it lacked the sufficient storage capacity. In addition, there was also a study that was done by Compass. This was a freight study, talking about larger trucks, especially for the Amazon. And this showed, and there were congestion maps that were shown. These maps showed that the Franklin-Garretta interchange was also failing. It was experiencing extreme delays, and because of that, that was one of the significant issues that staff had, was with the intersections already being failing, and then putting in large trucks onto those intersections, we had significant, we had significant concerns with that. At the December 21st hearing, the council noted that they generally supported the use. They were okay with it. They were okay with the design, but they also had significant concerns in regard to the traffic and the infrastructure. The direction was given to the applicant to consider doing a traffic impact study, which we didn't have at the time, to discuss with ACHD the timing of future road improvements. Also, there was a comment from one of the council to discuss this project with Canyon County, and even to discuss beyond the traffic impact study, the larger improvements that would be necessary, basically for the whole network beyond just what would be recommended by the traffic impact study. Since this time, staff has received a letter from ACHD dated February 15th, 2022. This was in the online file. This letter basically just asked for additional information. This letter basically just asked for additional information from the traffic study that was supported to them. They they haven't given us a position on it. They were just saying, please submit this, please submit that. They have, however, in an email that you also find on the online file, it was put in there recently. There was an email from A C H D talking about that the integrated, the five year integrated work plan has recently been completed, like on the twenty sixth of February. And the improvements in around Franklin and Blackhead are not being moved up. There were some discussions. I'm sure the applicant will get into it. They've got much more knowledge of it than I do. They were talking about widening Franklin and what kind of improvements could be maybe accelerated or moved, or whether they could do some right away dedication. A C H D was not amenable to this. Again, their their position was the five year integrated work plan is done. These projects aren't involved. With that, that's, I think, everything that I have as far as update with new information this evening, counsel.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward?
I'm working on it here, sorry. Yeah, here you go.
I think we're fighting over the pointer. Hold on, I was trying to open this up for you. Sorry. Okay, there you go.
Mayor, members of the council, Deborah Nelson, six oh one West Bannock Street, here on behalf of the applicant. We're gonna start with just a few topics, a brief overview, a recap of the last hearing for council member Schrader's benefit, but and also just to touch on a few additional points from Alan's recap there for about why this project, why this project now, and also get into some proposed phasing with the road improvements. So why this project? This project provides needed industrial space. Meridian has less than one percent vacancy for industrial versus over fourteen percent vacancy for office. There is no industrial land available for development in the near term. Industrial is ideal next to I eighty four and the new Highway sixteen interchange. The project meets the ten mile plan's jobs goal, supporting two thousand jobs. As called for in the ten mile plan, the project provides buildings that range from seventeen thousand square feet to three hundred and fifty thousand square feet, each divisible into smaller segments, supporting a variety of business sizes as they grow. And very important to our topic this evening about transportation, industrial uses generate six to eight times less traffic than office and retail uses. So you can improve your jobs to housing ratio with the least amount of traffic with this project. So for all of these reasons, at our December hearing, the council members commented that this is a great project, that light industrial on this site makes a lot of sense with its proximity to I eighty four and Highway sixteen. But of course, you had questions about the timing, especially in relation to the timing of road improvements. So why this project now? Jobs are needed now. Seventy eight point five percent of Meridian residents currently get in their cars to drive outside of your city to Boise, Nampa, or further for work. Industrial space is needed now. This is a short term and a long term problem. Less than one percent vacancy means new businesses cannot cite here and existing businesses who need to expand and want to stay in Meridian are forced to relocate outside of Meridian. You've received letters and testimony from area businesses talking about this problem that they're facing, that they need industrial space now, including letters from Cincy, Northwest Will Filment, Infinity Pools, and others. And finally, as to why this project now, because it can be responsibly phased with road improvements. Here's what we know about the timing of road improvements now, responsive to your questions in December. We've submitted our T I S. We're continuing to work with A C H D on the final review comments. So we now know what mitigation to expect with the project. We also know the timing of the Highway sixteen interchange now. The interchange connection with Franklin is funded and scheduled to begin this summer and be completed in two thousand twenty four. Two thousand twenty four is the earliest we would have our first occupancy for this project. It isn't until nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square feet that mitigation is required by the T I S. And this is to either widen Black Cat or construct the north south collector from our northwest corner of the site to Franklin. To build out that nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square feet will take approximately three to five years, building out approximately twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. We know Franklin Road has an existing level of service deficiency in the P M peak hour for road segments. But it's scheduled to be widened in the C I P, twenty twenty six to twenty thirty. And it's scheduled in the work plan to be designed in two thousand twenty six. We are working to expedite this as best we can. More on this in a minute. But even before Franklin is widened, we know that with our project up to nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square feet, Franklin Road intersections function at the level of service. We also know that the nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square foot buildout is less than ten percent of the trips on Franklin. City council asked at the last hearing, not just what we will be doing pursuant to the T I S. We, of course, have to mitigate the impacts there. But you also asked, what more can we do beyond those requirements to address your timing concerns? We agree to cap the project to that nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square foot threshold until there is an improved direct connection from the site to Highway sixteen. There are three great options to provide this connection, all of which are near term. We are working to expedite these with right of way acquisition now. We're furthest along with option two. We have secured nearly all of the right of way from our site to Highway sixteen in option two. As the council requested, we also proposed to A C H D that we would be willing to construct portions of their arterial system with a cooperative development agreement. They are not interested in this at that time. At this time, we'll continue to work with the city and A C H D on your priorities for this area. But A C H D said that with the help of the right of way that we're acquiring, that will help shorten the time between design and construction. And with that right of way, we can move forward to construct offsite collectors. The project is going to be making significant investments in the area's roadways. This includes approximately three point five million in onsite improvements because of the two major collectors, east, west, and north, south, that are within the boundaries, as well as Black Cat frontage. In addition, we will be paying one point four million in impact fees, which is our proportionate share for area roadways. Plus, we're working to do more, as I mentioned, to expedite the timing of area roadways. We've already committed over a million dollars on right of way. Expect to commit another two to three million or more for offsite road improvements. And the biggest give to address your concerns about timing is agreeing to the cap of nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square feet. So not just for the Black Cat or the north south collector as the T I S calls for, but until there's a direct improved connection all the way from the site to Highway sixteen. The council told us, you recognize the importance of this use, but you wanted to understand the timing. Since the last hearing, we now know that Highway sixteen is imminent. It's funded and scheduled for completion in two thousand twenty four concurrent with our earliest occupancy. We now know that at nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square feet, we meet everything in the T I S. We aren't triggering any additional new failures of levels of service. We know that the Franklin intersections continue to function at levels of service. We know that we're less than ten percent of the trips on Franklin. We've secured significant right of way to expedite the timing of planned road improvements. We're really doing everything in our power to provide that something more on the timing that the council asked for. And we continue to believe that there are many opportunities for expediting roadways in this important area of the city. But even if we're wrong in that, in that belief, we are taking the risk by agreeing to the cap. We're taking the risk on the timing of those additional roadways coming into place to connect our project to Highway sixteen. So here's an additional, here's an opportunity to add an additional a thousand jobs just with this first phase, without any need for additional infrastructure. And you get a motivated developer to find a solution to unlock the second half of the development for another thousand jobs. And here's an opportunity to provide industrial space that is desperately needed now to keep Meridian businesses who need to expand in Meridian. If that will stand for questions.
Thank you, Deb. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Council, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Deb. I did review the previous meeting and I'm up to speed on it. Could you walk me through, clearly, it's a significant amount of the total square footage of your site, nine hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Would that represent your one large potential anchor in Frito? Or what what would that equate to? How many of the buildings would that equate to?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader. It would encompass a variety of sized buildings, since we've got ranges all the way from seventeen thousand up to three hundred and fifty thousand. That gives you an idea with that range, what nine hundred and sixty thousand could encompass, right? So that could be now two to three of the larger buildings and a handful of smaller, depending on how you do that math. So it gives flexibility to to meet that need, but still within the range of the road capacities.
One more.
Council, Mr. Schrader.
So I read the letter from the highway district regarding the T I S, I guess. What's the rationale with your timing today? You're offering certainly some solutions and I appreciate that. I think you're being really proactive. I agree that industrial is desperately needed and I actually think it really works well with where the economy is heading. I guess my question is, why come today and not flush out these questions with the highway district on the T I S?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader. Because we are far enough along with that effort, we, you know, I think in December, we granted we weren't. But at this point, the T I S has been completed and submitted. We've received the review comments and we're comfortable where they are. The work to respond to those is is underway. And with that effort with what's in the T I S, what the review comments we've received so far, we're comfortable that we can understand what those requirements will be. Keep in mind, we are subject to whatever it is. We're agreeing to meet the mitigation, whatever is imposed there. So we're taking that risk as well. But I think we feel comfortable what it is. And we feel comfortable that it's identifiable at this threshold. That is the first trigger for mitigation. And we can live with that level, not just for what's in the T I S, but even further.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Total square footage of the the entire, refresh my memory, what the total square footage of all the buildings are.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, two point two million. Approximately.
With that, I think we'll be good for now, but standing in front row.
Won't go far.
Mr. Corcoran, do we have anyone that signed up to provide testimony on the side?
Mr. Mayor, we do. We have four. First is Kayla Rich.
And just a reminder, we come forward, say your name and address for the record and be recognized for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman. My name is Kayla Rich and I live at nine three four nine West Deerfond in Star, Idaho. And I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments based on some of the staff notes on the packet. One of the things that was suggested in the staff notes, I'm in response to the applicant's request to have a little bit more of the light industrial mixed in instead of the the employment. One of the comments was that we felt like we needed to address long term growth in Meridian, not just current trends. And as I was thinking about this, I was thinking about, since this, the city council had proposed this ten mile plan in two thousand and seven, how much has changed? Not only in our community, but in the economy and the way that we do business. Since two thousand and seven, we now have Facebook and Facebook Marketplace and everything that you can buy at your fingertips on your smart device, which was not very smart in two thousand and seven. We also have Grubhub, where I can order every single meal that I want right from the comfort of my own couch, as well as getting groceries delivered, and I can even have my dog bathed from my front door. So the economy is changing. And not only that, is in our world, we were met with the difference of a lot of the ability to do commerce without actually having to go and drive places, mixed in now with the very reality of global pandemics, which then keep us at home and isolated. Through this, as you will find with most of the studies, if you reach out and look at Forbes and Gallup, they're realizing that a lot of the employment is now staying at home. And so our our employment use that was proposed in two thousand and seven for this area maybe need to change a little bit based on where we are going in the global economy. We no longer need to have so many people leaving their homes to go to the office. And so having our focus be on light industrials, that we can have what made America great to begin with, where we have manufacturing and we have storage and shipping of things, I think is a really good move for our community. And one more thing that I wanted to mention real quick was that a lot of people have been talking about the time. The time is now. There's so much growth in our valley. And I know that we weren't prepared for this much growth, being the fastest growing area in the country. But the Highway sixteen improvement has moved up their timeline because they've seen it. And this will also meet that timeline as well. And it appears as though the whole area is growing. So the time is now because it's not now. It's two thousand twenty four before the first occupant is there. So the planning starts now. And as a member of the community, I have just seen that the applicant has reached out to the city council many times, working, trying to be as agreeable as possible to make this plan work. And I think it would be a missed opportunity if their application was denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Corinne Caddis.
Good evening. My name's Corinne Caddis. I live at nine three five South Black Cat Road, Meridian. As I stated last time I was here, I feel this is a very good project that should come to Meridian. You remember last time, they kind of, I stated, they they really tried to accommodate everything that you've asked. And here we are again. They really accommodated everything that you've asked again this time of them. So to me, this is a very good company that really wants to do the right thing here in Meridian. And I just feel that this project is going to be a very good project for Meridian. And that's my state on this. They are very proactive, I think, regards trying to make it, you know, meet your requirements. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Julie Olson.
I've been against this from the beginning. The main reason is everything is being.
Say your name and address for the record.
Julie Olson, sixty one oh four West Viewpoint Drive, Meridian.
Thank you.
Reason I've been against it is, and when I'm. Reason I've been against it is, and what I'm hearing today is everything's talking about the connector and about Franklin. I'm curious about Frank, uh, Black Cat. There is so much traffic on that road right now that it's next to impossible to get down off the hill, down to the bottom part. And when I first addressed this in a letter, I was under the impression there was going to be a traffic light. Well, no, nothing's going to be done to Franklin or to Black Cat until after twenty thirty. And probably closer to twenty forty. In the meantime, traffic's going to be astronomical in that area. And I wouldn't have no problems with what they want to do, but this is not the right time. Do the infrastructure first. I sit here and I watch what goes on, on the freeway because I overlook it. And in the morning and in the evening, it's a parking lot out there. And that's with no accidents. It's just a flat parking lot. Black Cat's going to end up being a parking lot like that. I'm, like I said, I have no problems with this project with what they want to do. The timing is wrong. Infrastructure on Black Cat needs to be addressed. All I heard about was Franklin and the interchange. So at this point, I'm asking you to deny it. Thank you for your time.
Council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Ms. Olson, I want to make sure I understand the light you're talking about on Black Cat up on top of the hill where Overland comes in, tees in? Or what, where on Black Cat, are you talking about a light?
Well, when I come into Meridian, I go down Overland over the freeway. And that's going to be at the bottom. It's too late. I mean, there's, the people that are on View Place, it's next to impossible for them to even get out onto Black Cat now. And it's going to be even worse because it's going to add traffic. Plain and simple. While they're doing construction, it's going to add traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Any other questions?
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, the last person signed up in advance is Terry Nyborg.
Terry Nyborg, five one six zero West View Drive, Meridian. So I have a similar concern about Black Cat. I think the statement was made that the first nine hundred thousand feet would not not exceed the current streets. Maybe I misunderstood that. I've that's here and there. Black Cat needs, something needs to be done on it because there is a blind spot. If you've ever tried to come out of the Carroll Ridge, there's a blind spot at the bottom of the hill where cars go out of sight completely coming up the hill. And that whole hillside where Overland comes out and where View Drive comes out is a series, a series of blind spots, really. They've got it posted thirty five. If cars are going thirty five, it's okay, but they're not always going that speed. My concern again is just timing. I don't object to the project, but I object to the fact that the infrastructure does not support the project.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hoagland.
Sir, a call testimony from last time, it wasn't from you, but Wright Brothers has a pit that is being filled in. They're taking material out, but they're also filling it. And I, you know the timing when that is to be completed?
I have no idea. I own the land right above the freeway west. And I, I received dirt there as well, but not like the gravel pit. And if you'd have, if you had been out there in the last month or two, the truck traffic is pretty significant on Black Cat. Not only because of the backfill, but because Wright Construction, who pours the asphalt out of there, there's no material in that pit. So all the materials hold in or the concrete, concrete's held out, fills hold in and out. Truck traffic really is significant.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody that'd like to provide testimony, please come forward at this time. Or if you're online, you just raise your hand feature and we will bring you in for comments. Seeing nobody raising their hand or coming forward, would the applicant like to come forward for any last comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. First, a correction, Councilmember Burnt. Our current design that's shown in the concept plan is two million square feet. We began at two point two million in our application, but the various changes that were made along the way in response to staff's request for different buildings and building orientations reduced that down to about two million. The concerns that we refer tonight are about Black Cat, so I just want to provide some additional comments specific to Black Cat. We will be widening and improving Black Cat in front of our access points and in front, and doing the frontage improvements at the beginning of the project. So when we make the access connection to Black Cat, there will be turn lanes that are added then that will address the concerns that were raised about there not being room to access the site there within the existing road. We will also be putting in a signal along Black Cat at the access as soon as it's warranted and allowed. The additional widening along Black Cat is what's not triggered until the nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square feet. But again, we'll do what's required by the T I S. And as noted, we're working on a number of different routes to direct traffic that hopefully also is appealing to the neighbors who have concerns specific to Black Cat. That with our efforts, we think that there will be other opportunities to connect to highway sixteen as well. So with that, we hope that we've provided you enough information to address your concerns about timing, to understand how this project fits in with the area improvements and to accept a condition of approval that limits the build out consistent with the area improvements. We would ask for your support. We also ask for you to direct staff in their development of findings and conditions that aren't yet before you that, you know, will need to be worked out before this comes back for any final decision. We ask for consideration of the design standards flexibility we requested in the prior hearing where we did ask for some flexibility from design standards for industrial on glazing and minor changes on parking in front of buildings that was in our last hearing. So we just ask for the opportunity to work with staff on that in your direction in that regard. And with that, stand for more questions.
Thank you. Council, more questions for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Deb, I just wanted to make sure highway sixteen, you talked about that improvements and we know the state has done funding, full funding for that and whatnot. I wanted to be certain. You said completion in two thousand twenty four?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, that's correct. We've been in contact with I T D and that's what they say. They have, they've got it fully funded all the way, the, the project phases that include the connection to Franklin. Going out to bid this spring, expect to commence construction this summer. And they plan to be completed in two thousand twenty four. So it's been expedited.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilmember.
That was a question I was going to have for A C H D, but I think you answered it there that because A C H D, you know, that the connections weren't originally funded. Have, have those connections been funded by I T D? To for the local road? Cause I know A C H D had some issues when this is going to be completed and not having fun, funding for, for those connections into that expressway, I call it, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, yes, I know there's continued discussions between the state and the highway districts about how to support that. And we understand that's part of why A C H D at this point has not moved up their design year from two thousand twenty six. That they are open to other ways that this could be expedited. I think they're very respectful of the city's priorities. And so if this were a priority area for the city, I think A C H D has expressed an interest in working with the city on that. But at this time, the design is still at two thousand twenty six to move forward with this. We're helping to shorten the one to two years of right of way acquisition that would normally follow that. We're hoping we're cutting that significantly and then they can move into construction.
And, Mr., we do have Christie from A C H D on if we need to. How was that your comment that you were trying to, yes? Look, counsel, would you like to hear anything from A C H D at this point in time? Is that? So Christie, if you could provide an update on what you've heard to date?
Mr. Mayor, council members. As of, as of this evening, I don't know that we have any additional updates on what was already provided in the testimony or in the written information given to you. The five-year work plan was adopted on January twenty sixth and it does have, as stated, those sections of Franklin for design in twenty six. They have not been moved up yet to date. There are other corridors that will tie into highway sixteen that were accelerated with the adoption of this plan. I believe Ustick being one of those. But obviously we would look at the next update to the five-year work plan on what potentially could be and what funding is available to accelerate those. And we obviously have to work with I T D on those, those items. But currently, no, we don't have those slated for acceleration.
Council, any specific questions related to where that stands?
Mr. Mayor, remind me of those dates of when those are currently to be constructed. C H D.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I believe that was burnt. Sorry, it doesn't always show me on my screen who is talking. We don't have a construction date for those segments. They are in for design and everything else is, is future. We, we did identify, so our capital improvement plan is our twenty-year plan. And it gives a forecasted need of when those improvements, we anticipate those improvements would be needed. And I believe those are in the staff report. I think the Franklin is twenty six to twenty six to thirty. So we, we would anticipate during that timeframe, but we don't have an actual construction date until it gets moved up in the plan and more funding is identified.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I was talking about the, the connections to highway sixteen that Mr. Hoagland referenced earlier.
Are you talking about the connection at Franklin and highway sixteen?
Ustick.
Or Ustick and sixteen? Oh. I apologize. I don't have that or that map on a separate screen. Let me see. My system is a little slow at home. Give me one moment. Okay, so for, for Ustick Road, those both, both the intersection and the roadway between McDermott and Black Cat are in design in twenty six. We had accelerated the two miles of roadway east of that. We did not accelerate all of the roadways all the way out to highway sixteen. And Black Cat, that intersection also was accelerated. That one, we have a construction year of twenty four and things east of that were all accelerated. And we included it into the plan this year and accelerated design to twenty six.
Mayor Franklin.
Councilmember.
Franklin Road, can you clarify, Christie, the timeframe on the connection of Franklin Road?
Yeah, Franklin Road, we do not have a construction year. We just have design in at twenty six.
Thank you. My answer is right after Linda Road or Pass. But that's a different meaning.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. Christie, I'm curious for Franklin Road, you know, if there's an accident on the freeway or things are particularly jammed up, Franklin Road becomes the alternative way, if you're going between Boise, Napa, Meridian. And you talked about funding is going to tie in Ustick to sixteen, but not Franklin. Can you give me some insight into that?
Insight into what the timing on both? We, we have both in for design in twenty six. This was a little bit of a, when I T D accelerated highway sixteen, it accelerated much faster than what we had anticipated it was going to be. So we don't have the funding to be quite as responsive to those significant accelerations. So we did accelerate both projects, both Ustick and Franklin in the integrated five-year work plan to be designed in twenty six. We don't have a construction year on either. There were a few sections of Ustick that were accelerated east of that because there's, but that, that, those were another request of the city. But yeah, that's where we sit with both of those. Obviously, we reevaluate every year and we coordinate that with the city as well as to what your priorities are.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilmember.
Yes, and we know what Mayor Simpson's priorities are, of course. It's councils, it's number one from the city.
There's, there's, there might be a few in Meridian that are by priority right now.
Christie, and I don't know if you can answer this question, but I, I think it was Commissioner Goldthorpe who had mentioned previously another meeting we had with him about, you know, the, this, there was no funding coming from the state for connections into highway sixteen. And it was all up to the local jurisdictions. I know in Napa, they're concerned about where that ties in on the south side that the I T D had said, nope, that's up on, on you to the local, to their highway district there. Which, you know, causes some problems because as you said, this has been accelerated, the planning that has to go into this, preparing for that. Is there, I, can you give me some insight into the effort being made to try and get I T D to free up funding for those connections for our, our local highway districts to, to connect to this vital transportation corridor?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland. Unfortunately, I don't have that information as to the funding sources for that. I know for, for on our side, we primarily for those major roadways, it's, it's impact fee collections. But I have not been involved in any conversations directly with I T D on additional funding to accelerate those connections.
The, the short answer is yes, there are ongoing conversations, but there's no commitments is what my understanding is.
Mr. Mayor, may I also address that question about connections? So, so just to be clear, the connection to Franklin Road is included in I T D's funding. Their, their package, when they construct, they will connect the roadway. So it will physically connect and be functional from Franklin Road to the new highway sixteen interchange. That's the piece that will be completed in two thousand twenty four. So I mean, they have bike lanes, they have sidewalks, they widen it, they have all of the connections. The piece that A C H D will have later that Christie is talking about is widening Franklin Road. So just, I just want to be clear about what the connection is. It will connect, it will serve. And that's why we were talking about that even up to nine hundred and sixty thousand square feet, our project now can connect to the highway sixteen and doesn't continue to deteriorate Franklin because we're less than ten percent the trips and we don't trigger any level of service problems with intersections. It's because that we, we can already go straight there. What we're saying, what we're self imposing is that we won't go further until Franklin is widened. So that the uncertainty that Christie's flagged with funding, we're taking on that risk with you. And truly, we're partnering with the city to be as motivated as possible to try to expedite that where it makes sense. If not, we won't be able to continue to build out above that initial threshold.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Then your acquisition of right of way then on Franklin helps to facilitate that, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, that's right. That's, we're trying to help the timeline.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Yep. And, and the cap that you're putting on yourself of nine hundred and sixty thousand square feet, that doesn't include anything on Black Cat, only Franklin? Any improvements?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, let me make sure I understand your question. So we will be improving Black Cat frontage right at the beginning, including turn lanes right at the beginning with our access. We'll put in a signal as soon as it's warranted. But we won't be doing further widening offsite until after nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred square. But we won't be doing further widening off site until after 960,500 square feet or another path opens up, right? We're pursuing all three options to see what we can pull together.
Mr. Mayor, so we're widening Franklin, or that's what we're talking about after that connection is made. But what are you saying that you're also going to widen Black Cat as well after that connection is made is?
Alan, would you mind pulling up the slide that illustrates this? I think it's easier to see a picture. The slide that has the three.
Your slide or my slide?
Yes, mine, please.
This one?
I can advance if that's all right then. Thank you. Okay, there we go. So Councilmember Burnt. You look at option one, I think that's what you were asking about. That involves widening Black Cat all the way to the signal. That involves Franklin being widened all the way from Black Cat to the interchange. Option two, of course, we still have our frontage improvements, all of our interior collectors there, then the north-south collector, and then widening of Franklin all the way to the interchange. Option three would be building a new east-west collector further and connecting up McDermott. Obviously, everything would have to be compliant with whatever mitigation is required for this level of trips. But these are options that exist for taking us even further, including improvements that benefit the city and the area and help expedite area roadways planned here. These roadways that were shown are all planned on the Master Street map in your 10 mile plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Schrader.
Deb, if you just walk us through the likelihood, I think you mentioned earlier, option two seems more likely. If you could just sort of handicap each of these options and maybe give us a, yeah, just a better flavor for what is most likely.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, yeah, we're certainly further along on option two on the right of way and feel good about that direction. I mean, we like this use of the north-south collector to serve our site. And so we've got almost 100% of that right of way. Now, we're still subject to, this is ACHD's arterial roadway Franklin, so we're still subject to their timing on when they're willing to let that be widened. And so, you know, as mentioned, we've we've offered to help with that. We've offered to help through a cooperative development agreement. You know, we'll we'll stay in contact with ACHD to see if that if those, you know, priorities change and discussions with the city, we're certainly on board to partner with the agencies as they do that. But that's that's our favored approach, and we think we've pushed it the furthest along with right of way acquisition. But we've got other efforts underway as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Deb, this question is kind of similar to to Councilmember Schrader's question from earlier, which is, and I'll just be frank, I'm frustrated. We continued this to give you guys ample time to get this project shored up. I do not like when a project, when you have ample time to have it shored up to come back with lots of questions. This one here is driving me a little crazy. I think you guys had ample time to get this resolved and bring us back a finished solution. And so I'm curious, why come before us tonight when you have ample time to get this resolved?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kavanagh. I maybe we need to understand a little bit more about what we could do. I'm actually blown away that in two months they were able to acquire as much right of way as they have. They've accepted a cap on development that addresses all required mitigation with no further impacts on the area roadway. So I thought that is exactly what you guys asked for, right? You asked for help on comfort certainty on timing to align this development's build out with the area roadway. So rather than talking about what's the likelihood of the future development, what's the likelihood of Franklin getting expedited with Highway 16? They've just taken that on themselves and said, okay, we'll work on that.
Sure.
We can only control so much, but in the meantime, we'll accept the cap. So they this, I think this is as far as long as they can get it. They can't, you know, they can't make ACHD allow them to build their roads, but they'll keep in that discussion over the next period, a few years. So help me understand. I I guess I'm not following the what we should have done.
I guess, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
And I'm not interested in a in a back and forth on this. You you bring three options to help, I think, address some of the concern from the council, which is where I am very concerned about the impact of this project as much as I love it on Black Cat and Franklin. You've got three options that I think any one of them could help address that and would bring me great comfort. But none of them are finalized. You're working close towards option two. And again, you know, your business way better than I do, but I would know that if that's the concern of the council, I would have option two finalized before I come back from the count to the council to ask for approval. That's me. And you chose not to, and that's fine. We didn't ask you to come back in 30 days. We didn't ask you to come back in 60 days. We said, take as much time as you want. So this project is right. And you came back because you think the project is right, and I'll just tell you right now that I disagree.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kavanagh, and we we might just have to agree to disagree. So I don't want to have back and forth like you said either. I just, but I will respond as briefly that just so I guess that I'm communicating as clearly as I can. That these are future phase options that are out of our control, other than the best we can do to acquire and to work with agencies. These are year long efforts, not, you know, 30 days, 90 days. But what we can present to you and what I have tried to communicate and maybe not as well as I could have is that the phasing that we've proposed does address your concerns stated about Black Cat and others because Black Cat is not over capacity with our project up to 960,000 square feet. And so it isn't triggered. There's nothing there that's needed that we're not doing. We'll be actually ahead of what it needs with the widening that we'll be adding. And then with the cap until it's further widened, we are just making sure that that is addressed. On Franklin, it is an existing problem with the PMP Gower in the westbound direction. That's an issue now. It will be resolved with widening of Franklin. It's resolved in the normal course in the near term within project timelines that the city sees all the time of, okay, that's in the CIP, there's no mitigation required. That's a common response from ACHD when it's in the CIP and it's near term. But regardless of that, you know, timing that is out of our control, but we just identify those facts. We do not have impacts on the intersection with this build out either. So we don't make that worse. And we're less than 10%, which I think you understand very well is ACHD's threshold there for how they're look at how you impact existing deficiencies. So I I do hear you that we we don't have a solution to ACHD's widening Franklin faster than what's identified in their CIP. We'll keep working on it. But if we don't, if we fail on that, we've still accepted the condition that helps to keep it at the right level now. I know that may not address all your questions, but thank you for letting me respond.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, Deb, I want to encourage you a little bit too, just to just to give you a little a little bit of balance. I think to me, this makes a lot of progress. I I think if you were to tell me that, you know, you'll cap until option two, but that your end state at the completion of your project was a combination of option one and option two, that that to me would would more than proactively solve the entirety of the concern in this area. Do you do you just so, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but ACHD's letter provided me with a little bit of frustration too, because I felt like they just weren't at a point that they were ready to work with you to just let you build or or let you move forward. I think there was even a comment that it would be premature and some subsequent emails and you know, that that to me is a fresh, I just want to express that's a frustration for me because I feel like this is a critical project. I want to see this project happen. So, you know, what do you think is the main hurdle toward executing? You're you're taking that equity risk on half of your project. And I I appreciate that. So, you know, I guess my questions are, number one, are you and maybe I'm pushing too much and getting a little greedy, but are you open to a scenario where you build option two? You know, after your cat, you know, you're going to have the cap, you're going to do option two to exceed your cap. And then the end state, though, that the city gets and everybody gets is a combination of option one and option two by some, you know, at some point, just because you you can feel the pain in this area, right? This is a huge project. I don't think we would ask for something that big from somebody that wasn't this size of a user, this amount of land. I think to some precedence, ACHD is a totally different animal than ITD, but you know, when Costco came and Winko came, dang, if we didn't get Chindon just totally, almost totally solved. And that's the kind of, that's what I'm hoping to get ultimately out of this is a comprehensive solution. I think option two goes really far. I think the cap is huge. It it helps provide incentive on both sides. You can move forward. When your project's rocking, you're leasing it up, you're motivated. But I'd love to see a combination of option one and option two at the end of the day. That's just to share some feedback.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, I'll I'll provide an answer, and if the development team has something to offer, add to that, I welcome them to come do so. But I mean, I guess, first of all, with ACHD, yeah, we, you know, we we did offer to to fund this. The city asked us to. We're definitely willing to do that. We'll keep working with them. I think, as Christie said, you know, they just got everything expedited pretty quickly by ITD. We're excited about that because it creates a great opportunity, but they've, you know, they've got to digest this. I think the city has an opportunity to work with them to express your priorities. And so I I think there's some great opportunities here for 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 that going forward. And we'll continue to be a part of that and hopefully, you know, partnering with both of you on that effort. I think it's likely that some combination of these is going to end up here. You know, we've got, obviously, we've got other parties that control the right of way on Black Cats. If some of this is third party out of our control, we're trying to acquire doing our best. But some of it's a little bit out of our control. Now, you know, to the east of Black Cat is developer owned. It's likely that this is going to get developed and some of that's going to free up within the scope of this build out. So I think you're going to end up seeing both of these, you know, build out during the timeframe of that second, you know, the subsequent phases. We're very focused on that Northwest Collector because we think it provides a great opportunity for our trips to access Highway 16. But honestly, we're going to push on all of it and accept what we can get, and it may end up being a combination. You know, whatever's required by the TIS mitigation. And I, what else do you want to add?
Shane Felker, Ketchum, Idaho, part of the development team. Combination is fine with us. I think it's important to leave option three in there because with the uncertainty with how ACHD is going to handle Franklin, creating and improved right of way directly to the freeway, I think would be a great benefit that might be able to happen sooner than while we're pursuing it as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just to be super direct, and I'm the only person asking this question, so I don't want anybody else to get antsy about it, but would you be willing to say that you would do option two or option, well, really any of these options, but I'm more concerned about option two or option three with the addition of Black Cat up to Franklin? Because I think that that's kind of an acute area. And I I'd like to see that area a little bit better solved for. You know, either prior to the cap being exceeded or I I think these provide a solution, but I don't think it provides a comprehensive solution to this area. So I guess my my request would be, are you open to something that, you know, includes option one, I think, gets you there. Option two with the addition of Black Cat up to Franklin or option three with the addition of Black Cat up to Franklin in terms of it being, you know, widened out fully.
It's tough to give you a definitive answer when it involves landowners that we continue to work with. I think somewhere between those two hurdles, the midpoint, 960 and the end, that's probably a victory that we could, you know, put a pretty serious bet on. There's just a lot of right of way to acquire. I don't know if that answers it clearly, but.
Mr. Mayor.
If the hurdle was correct, I think that's something we'd be able to handle.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Okay, so ma- maybe, though, it sounds like there is some openness to one of these three options up to your cap of 960,000 square feet, and then perhaps there is an additional hurdle of, and maybe the maybe the totality of I we'll we'll pick that midpoint. And then at that point, to exceed that additional threshold, we see the completion of Black Cat all the way up to Franklin. I'm just pushing around. Everybody's giving me a funny look, but I I'm just curious if there's an iteration of that that works possibly.
I think it's quite possible that that would work. It would take a little bit of number crunching.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. I mean, this gives me a lot to chew on. I think there's a lot of details that would need to be worked out. It probably would have given me more comfort. And and I know you guys are going to work through the TIS with ACHD. I'm just a control freak, but if if you guys had worked through that piece on the TIS with ACHD, I think that would that would have given given me a little more visibility as well. But I appreciate where you're coming out on this. I think it's proactive. I like, to me, I think there is a deal to be had. Personally, for me, I think I could support the project if you know, it was one of these options, but option two or option three had an additional hurdle that you're going to finish that Black Cat segment because I think that don't take this the wrong way. There are other developers there and I get it, but you're you're the big one, right, in this area. So that's just me. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
And I think that the the thing that's given me a little bit of, you know, just uneasiness is well, to put some clarity to my statement, when we did Chindon, we widened Chindon, there was a Starz agreement and we were, we were the the two developers that were involved with that, those projects you're familiar with and refunded at the end. So I guess my question, and we have ACHD, and if 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 the developer is willing to do a cooperative type agreement where these roads can be made with some type of reimbursement on the back end, I don't know, what's the big deal? I mean, what's what's holding this deal up? And when you have, she's there, I shall answer the question in a minute, but that's that's I I'd like to know that because honestly, if 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 we can have that deal done, then what we're talking about is moot. And so if we could get some clarity from ACHD of why they're not wanting to do a cooperative agreement with a developer who is willing to be proactive, I I just don't understand what the big deal is. Maybe I'm missing something. I, you know, I'm not, I'm never the smartest guy in the room, promise you, but you know, this sort of makes sense to me.
Christie.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt. With regard to a CDA, I, again, I was I was not involved in those conversations. I mean, all I have to go off of is what I saw in the packet materials and didn't have an opportunity to speak to staff before this meeting because it looked like that happened just within the last couple of days, that conversation has happened. So it's still early in the process of that conversation. And I mean, we do CDAs on other projects and that's certainly something that we can have a conversation with a developer in more detail on. But I am not in the position or prepared today to say absolutely, we will enter into that. Sure. Obviously, the details of that would have to be to be worked out, but it's, I think it's still I think it's just so early in that conversation.
Right.
Because when we when we respond to this type of an application, this is just an annexation of Rezone, and there's no development tied to it. It's a little different of a conversation than when we have a full actual development application that we're working on. I'm not sure if that is part of that, but it's I'm certainly something that we would continue and and have a conversation on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christie, and I certainly didn't want to put you on the spot like that. I just been trying to think about this tonight. I'm like, you know, it seems like it's not that, you know.
Maybe the applicant would like to put some words on the record related to this comment.
Well, part of the reason we came with options wasn't to look unprepared. We apologize for that. It's just that with so many moving pieces and trying to work with ACHD and and also guessing a little bit on what the city's priorities are. We wanted to make sure that we could show you a roadmap that had the options to be to get complete access, complete improved access to the freeway. No matter what, if we run into a hurdle with a landowner, if ACHD is unable to move funding forward, you know, that we could sit here with a clear conscience and say, we're going to get you there fully improved right to the freeway and start eliminating some of the traffic concerns that are on. that are on Black Cat.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt.
So would, if we could, you know, if there were further conversations with ACHD about a CDA, I mean, would this process with the roads take place immediately? I mean, like, I know that there's some right of way that you're working on on Black Cat, so I get that there's a little bit of, you know, a little bit of homework that you need to do. But like, would, if you had the right of way and with the CDA agreed upon by ACHD, would you, would you wait until you hit 1 million square feet? Or would you start working on those roadways with improvements as soon as possible?
It's a pretty expensive roadway to build and there is a bit of a blend of being able to put some buildings up, they can help finance that. So certainly, all the improvements and the millions that we have to put into our property would be happening immediately, along with a signal and the turn lanes that were discussed. But moving beyond that and starting to build roads far away from us requires us to be able to bring in some money from the development to make that happen. And fortunately, there's a threshold where we start creating an impact that, you know, would allow us to do that.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Holton.
Mayor? I think you've moved ball forward. I mean, progress is being made. It can be maddeningly slow at times, but in option two and three, one of the things I like about those is the fact that you're not adding to Black Cat in the traffic. And in the, in the TIS, they do talk about, the study recommends widening Black Cat to five lanes. I'm reading from the TIS, however, there isn't enough existing right of way. You don't control that, they don't control that at this time. So two and three, you've committed to adding the turn lanes in front of your site and putting in a signal when allowed. And then we know coming, marching from the east, heading west is development in that next section. That's right there to the east. So there will be a signal there at some point in time, and I think that will help traffic on, on Black Cat. Under option two, you guys control, do you have control of the access road going north to connect into Franklin?
We do.
Okay. And then to follow up, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holton.
And you're acquiring right of way from Franklin to the Highway 16, future interchange?
Have almost all of it, over 90% of that.
Okay, so to continue, Mr. Mayor, progress, progress is being made. It's there. And I guess this, to jump, this is more, you might be able to answer it, but Christie, I think, would know. Christie, it looks like that interchange under option two is at the half mile. So likely we'll have a light at that interchange. And is, and for you, I guess, I guess, Christie, if you could answer that, yea or nay?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I think that was Hoagland. I'm getting much better at the voices on knowing who's talking. Yeah, I would say that is, that's quite likely. I don't have the master street map in front of me, but my best guess is we typically do some type of, whether it be a roundabout, it looks like they have a roundabout identified, either a roundabout or a signalized intersection at mid-mile.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holton.
Follow up with Christie. In the TIS, item number three, it talks about the McDermott Road, Franklin Road interchange. And, you know, the plan is to ultimately have Franklin Road five lanes, but in the interim, maybe having a three by three signalized intersection. Is, is that something that, where does that fit in? Even though Franklin hasn't been widened and it's, it'll be in design, but there's no plans at this time, is that something that can be accomplished sooner as opposed to later?
That one is, apology, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland. That one, and I believe this was somewhat addressed in the email, because McDermott is the dividing line between our county and Nampa area. We would have to coordinate any improvements at intersection. If you're wanting to do a three by three, it would have to be coordinated in additionally, additional funds from our neighbors to do that. So I mean, I'm not going to say that it is not something that can't be looked into, but it's not just our jurisdiction that would have a say in funding and accelerating that or not.
Mr. Mayor, Christie, I appreciate that and understand there's a lot of things to be worked out. I guess, just to comment too, looking at the Black Cat widening, I think with other property owners, if this gets underway and half of this development is built, I think that's going to spur other activity. And then there'll be coordination to make those things happen. I think more players come to the table that can move things a little, little quicker. But just my observation.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Schrader.
Yeah, maybe one, just to pile on to one of Councilman Hoagland's comments. I do agree that option two and option three are superior in the sense that you're providing an independent route into Highway 16. I, you know, I have a vast preference over those options. And then again, with the addition of some additional widening of the rest of Black Cat up to Franklin, I think, I think that's helpful. But I'm not sure, at least for me, that option one stands on its own. I don't think you're going that way anyway, so it probably doesn't matter. But, yeah, I just wanted to agree with that comment.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Holton. I did forget one question I had for you, Deb. You talked about capping the project 960,500 square feet, which is approximately half the size, until improved direct connection to Highway 16 is completed. I guess we need to define what, what does improved connection to Highway 16 really mean?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, we're happy to work through whatever language makes sense. But for us, that meant the widening that's needed to mitigate these issues. So on Franklin, that's widening to five lanes. And on Black Cat, if that option is, it's widening to five lanes. It's putting in the collector road up to its full build out on the new north-south collector. So that, you know, what the roadway has called for to address the planned traffic improvements.
I got nowhere to go, so I'm just waiting for council to ask for questions or motions or anything else.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holton.
We've been seeing Councilman Borton online. He's not sleeping, absolutely not. So I didn't know if he had any questions. He's been very quiet, but he doesn't have to comment or ask any questions, obviously. But just want people to know he's here and paying attention.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton.
I appreciate that. It's, it's just continued thought over the last time we heard this in December. It's such a struggle in this discussion because it just highlights what I think was an issue before, was the challenge of timing. It's really hard on a big project to successfully have a ready-fire-aim sequence. And so that's what I struggled with before and I struggle with now. The staff's perspective and planning and zoning's perspective weighs heavily on that as well. So unless, and I don't, I struggle, you know, ringing a developer to accomplish extremely difficult tasks and be tied with a bunch of off-site things that they're being asked because the timing here is challenging. It's, it's off, frankly. The zoning issue was something I had struggled with a little bit before as well. But when I listened to what Deb was describing, I, the concept in Councilman Schrader's question, the concept of option, you know, having a cap that entail option one and either two or three as a solution. I think you're going to have everyone on Black Cat. Whether you go two or three, you're still going to have people all over Black Cat. So I just try, but I struggle with even that benchmark because that's a big ask. So all of that just come, that's why I'm just quietly contemplating, can you get over the challenge at this property, which will develop? Might not be right to develop right now in light of all of the big picture moving parts. And the applicant's done a phenomenal job trying to make it work, but I don't know if I'm there yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Schrader.
So I'm wondering if it's worth taking a little, a little bit of time. I know you guys need to get moving, but I'm kind of wondering if it's worth taking a little bit of time, try to finalize some details of the ACHD, pursue the Cooperative Development Agreement angle a little bit with them, maybe at the same time flesh out with staff, some sort of a hybrid option where, you know, we ultimately get, you know, whether it's an enhanced cap with more roadway improvements or a, an additional second cap that gets us there. Wondering if it's worth kind of, I hate pushing, I hate, and I apologize, it's really kind of crappy to like throw out a solution like that and try to negotiate it with you right here. I think that's kind of a messed up thing. I didn't mean to do it that way, but we don't have a choice. We're like public officials, we have to have public meetings to have these conversations. It's just how it works. So maybe it's worth like, if you guys want to chew on that, I would suggest a continuance personally to chew on that option. But maybe finding out if other council members are supportive of some type of a hybrid with two caps. Because if the rest of council isn't into that, I don't know if that's worth doing. So I don't know, I'm kind of just looking around, trying to make eye contact and.
I don't know if there was a question, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman.
If the applicant would like to talk about the, whether a continuance feels like it makes sense at this point, or what you were going to say?
I think it would not take us long to hone in on a more definitive singular option that had the caps and enhancements and phases that you're talking about. But it would be good to get the opinion of council that could help us go along with that. So it wouldn't take us much time to come back. We were really trying to make sure we were hitting the buttons and I feel like we have much clearer direction right now.
Well, and I'll just speak in for one very, we have one new council member who wasn't here last time, who has quite frankly changed the direction of the conversation and one who's not here, who would take the conversation in another direction from the, so it's going to be a jump ball when you come back, one way or the other, with where council was and/or is, or as they move forward with what they see. That's, I think on one hand, I'm hearing openness. On the other hand, I think that you could come back and find yourself at a jump ball and no idea, no matter what you do. Based on timing or other factors that could, so I don't want to mis, I don't want to mislead you because one person's not here and who knows who's going to be here next time? And you can, you can see what I'm seeing from that standpoint, so. Yeah.
Do we take the jump ball now or later?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holton.
I'm curious, on the hybrid option, if Councilman woman Schrader would, would kind of help fill that in? When the hybrid option was including option one, but my only hesitation is there is we're asking, and we've done this, had these conversations before, where asking them to do something where there is no control by them on the parties involved. So that's why I'm kind of hesitant on that, because that's just like, we don't know, they can't force them. I mean, if they don't want to sell, I mean, their, their hands are tied. That's why I'm kind of, was leaning more to options two and three in that, in seeing if that was the possible solution.
Options two and three have the exact same issues. There's no option that doesn't, there's no option that they can complete themselves without other people, whether it's ACHD, whether it's a private property owner. Someone has to give them the ability to do anything on any of these options.
We have the most control over option three and followed closely by option two. Option one, there are so many owners involved, so many vested parties that its odds are significantly lower.
Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I guess part of my rationale was that would be at an additional point in the future, right? So what I was proposing was option two or three and then an additional cap. And I'm assuming, depending on leasing activity, the progression of this project, the, you know, how things are going, that, that gives a lot of time, line of sight, motivation, alignment of interests. And I don't think we really care like how it happens, right? So it's, to me, it's more like that's the principle, like the end state of where I'd love to see this by the completion of the whole thing, is I just really want to see kind of a combination of these. At a minimum, to me, it's actually just the extension of Black Cat all the way up to Franklin. I'd hate to throw the full option one plus option two or three at them. It feels like a lot, but I don't know, I'm just sort of thinking out loud, trying to be proactive. I think option two and three, you know, on their own, my, my only struggle is I, I either wish there was a really clear line of sight into Black Cat getting completed up to Franklin with ACHD through some kind of an agreement or something. I just feel like Black Cat, Black Cat's a real pain point. Kind of with you, though, in the sense that option two and three, I think give me a lot of comfort as moving forward. I think there could be a lot of, don't take this the wrong way, Deb, but, you know, up until you get to that 960,000 square feet, no matter what grade they're giving this thing, this could be painful. I mean, there's a couple painful years there potentially. That was my thinking.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt.
You know, there's a lot of great things about this project. Honestly, it's, there's, I think you've provided enough information to let us know that this is a project that's needed, you know, the jobs, whatever, the industrial portion of this job. I think that it's the wave of the future and how commerce is going to take place in society. I think that the fine woman who spoke earlier in testimony, I think that she was exactly right and there's no debating it. I know that you guys, I'm familiar with other projects that you guys have done. You're going to keep them, you're not going to sell them. I mean, there's, you check all the boxes. The only thing that is holding me back is just the complexities of the roadways. And it just causes, this is such a huge project. This is such a big, big, big project that I feel uncomfortable saying, well, it could be a portion of option three, it could be a little bit of option two, we really like option one. And so just, it's hard. When we did those other projects on Chindon, it was spelled out. They cannot open and get a CFO until those roads are completed. And it brought a bunch of, you know, relief to those who live in that area. And it made sense. Here, for me, it's just, there's just too much, there's, there's too much open-endedness to this. And not saying or against, but it's just, for me, it's just, I'm not quite there. I need a little bit more definitiveness with the roadways. And if that's, you know, what ACHD and, you know, a CDA, maybe that changes things. I'd like to see what that looks like, but that's where I'm at right now.
Council, where I'm hearing and seeing is a continuance. The day Councilman Cavanagh won't be in town. Good day, Councilman Cavanagh won't be in town.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
I I to to toy in on on a continuance, I I'm not opposed to that. But I don't, I don't know if we have a goal with the continuance. I mean, what is it that we want to accomplish with a continuance?
I think Councilman Cavanagh or Councilman Burt just spelled that is what more can be done with A C H D on a cooperative development agreement for. The road improvements for timing and other information. If they're willing to enter into that or if they're not. If if not, I I want to know why. You know, I think that's an important question. You know, and if if it comes back to say, well, they'll do it, but it's going to be at at the cost of Usick Road or the cost of something else for some reason. Is that their why? Or they just don't have time to deal with it right now because they're short staffed and everything else. That to me would be the, at least what I'm hearing is flushing out options or not options. So the it's fairly clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh, and I want you to be here.
I appreciate that and I recognize I'm especially contentious and I know no offense, it just. My my understanding was that we continued our meeting in December to get some of these things answered. And I recognize that you weren't able to get them all answered. But. I guess my request would be as if we're going to continue this again, which I'm fully in support of, whether I'm here or not. Because I really do like this project is that we give you ample time. To make sure that when you come back to us, that we as council can communicate to our citizens. How the roadway network is going to be positively impacted and when.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
I I would, I would like the applicant to to respond to our discussion at this point, we haven't closed the public hearing and. Want to get some feedback.
I I think one of the goals with providing these options wasn't a lack of clarity. We took the information we got from the T I S and the second we made. A demonstrable impact. We are limiting ourselves to a requirement to make a clear and improved connection all the way to the freeway. So I don't feel like there's a lot of question in what we're bringing forward or. Or a lack of clarity on our ability to solve traffic impact and and make the area better. In all of these scenarios, all the development that's occurring. Just to the east of us, we'll have a new access to the freeway that wouldn't be created otherwise. And so we see this as a tremendous benefit to all the development that's happening all around us.
Public testimony is not closed yet, but at this point in time, I'm, we're not going to open back up to the public unless we decide to do another hearing.
I think with a short continuance, we could complete total clarity on an option. That I think would satisfy at least the comments that I've heard this evening.
Mr. Mayor. Inquire of our city clerk, what does a short continuance calendar look like?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, the next available date would be April fifth, however, I believe Councilman Cavanagh is on vacation. After that, planning staff is on vacation, so the next day would be April twenty sixth.
Repeat that, what was the date?
April twenty sixth. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
That's, you know, April fifth, that's that's five weeks, that's, some would say that's short in our planning scheme of things. And in other ways, it's not very short and is staff here for April fifth?
Mr. Hoagland, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are, I am here on April fifth. I'm a little concerned just about how long it's going to take with them to discuss with A C H D. Before we even see this project, it's been months just to get here, so that's my concern.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
Christie's still on, I'm sure with this riveting testimony, she hasn't fallen asleep. Christie, is is it possible to have that those discussions with with the applicant and and see if some things can be decided? I I know you can't predict, but just from a meeting time perspective, and I know you have a lot on your plate. Is that possible?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, are you, you're talking about the April fifth, correct? And I did not fall asleep, I never fall asleep in your case this meeting. Um, I think it's certainly doable. To have a meeting or two between now and then and at least provide some clarity on A C H D stance on a few things. Because that's, that's what, four or five weeks?
Mr. Mayor Christie, yes, five weeks.
I think it's it's likely doable, at least to provide some clarification. I don't know that we, you know, I obviously can't say for certain that we can, you know. Nail out details, but I I think certainly some clarification that the council has specified that they would like from A C H D. I believe that's something we can get done in the next five weeks.
Mr. Mary.
So Mr. Members of the council and for the applicants as well, I mean. It's not really five weeks, it's like three. Because realistically, they need to then provide something back to staff, staff to have to comment and that comment has to be then submitted into the record. By the minimum of a week before. So it is three weeks, which is a pretty tight turnaround or another agency sometimes. So just to be aware that it's not really five weeks, it's a little bit less, and Val's got his head up, maybe he has a shorter window than I do, but I know it's a tight timeframe.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alan Tiefenbach, just to tag onto what Bill said, I guess my real concern is. What I'm hearing the council say to the applicant is to have a pretty clear idea of what you're going to do and give us some examples and just. With the amount of time that we're trying to push this into. I'm not sure if you're going to get that confidence.
Councilman Burt.
I have full faith in A C H D, you know. It's just, yeah, I mean, this. Let's just pick a date, let's go.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
I mean, the other option is April twenty sixth, that gives everybody a little more time. And. Councilman Cavanagh would be here. And and Alan, is is staff able to? Does that provide more time?
Certainly more is better, that will be the week I come back from vacation, but I will be here. I have something to look forward to when I come back from vacation.
Mr. Mayor and Alan, you will be well rested. I I mean, that is, that is an option, I mean, if we can, if we go with that, I know it's. You know, some hesitation because I realize on the business end of things, time is money and and it's something that. So if applicant would like to care to respond for April twenty sixth, that way we can be assured that meetings can be held and things hammered out, but.
I think that would work well for us, since we're talking about getting as specific as possible. And discussing potential conditions for approval. If we could just make sure that we could see the rest of the findings. From staff so that we knew. The the package of of what we were going to be spending in order to accomplish the goals that we would be presenting.
So Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
Question for Alan then, is that something that can be accomplished?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're talking about two different things, we're talking about findings, findings have not been prepared. In in this particular case, we would probably recommend similar to what would happen with Skybreak is where we would let Ms. Nelson at least do some crack at writing findings. But we are talking two different things, we we'd have to first of all, see what they're doing with what they're. Coming up with with the road first, right? Which is not going to happen within the next week or two, and then we'd have to write some kind of conditions of approval. Based on that, that's my hesitance, I'm not saying we can't do it, it just depends on. How much you expect.
Mr. Mayor, I probably. I wouldn't use findings per se, I think conditions, because they've had some requests of conditions and and I recall glazing and there was some parking out front and those types of things. Having a sheet of what conditions they're asking, what conditions staff is, you know. Thinks is acceptable or not acceptable, that way we have it in front of us can hash those out as well.
And Mr. Hoagland, again, members of the council, yes, this would be again, something will probably would would be best that Ms. Nelson would draft what she would be proposing as the conditions. We would add standard conditions, I can't. I can't attest to whether those conditions are going to relate to the to the road construction, because I don't know when we're going to have that road construction, so. Sure, we can, we can craft general conditions of approval and Ms. Nelson can craft what she proposes for those conditions as well.
Thank you, Alan, and Mr. Mayor, one comment to that, one comment, one comment. Yes, I I I'd hate to have the resolution to the road come up and then we're sitting up here scratching our head going, now, what were the conditions? The other stuff that we haven't talked about much, so that way it's all packaged together, so we can make ultimately make a make a final decision with Councilman Cavanagh present.
Again, I I don't want to beat anybody on either way or the other, you know, again. We're going to, if we have the full council at at that hearing. You're already sitting about a fifty fifty still based upon council and pro, so. Expectations are what they are, regardless of what we call them, conditions of approval or not. There's still issues about timing, maybe the roadway fixes it and solves it, I just don't want there to be an undue expectation that we talked about. Conditions of approval today. For a hearing, we're going to, I don't know, two of these council members may not be here and one more may be added in. Just want to set the bar of expectations, that's all. But we need to know about the other things for the conversation that. Fair enough, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will absolutely be here. Let's do it, let's continue this, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I move that we continue this to April twenty sixth.
Second motion. I have a motion second to continue to April twenty sixth, is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor seeing by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Guys have it and the item is continued to Labor twenty sixth. So with that, we'll move on to the last item for this evening, which is ordinance number twenty two dash nineteen seventy two. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance repealing and replacing Meridian City Code section one seven one regarding election districts, terms of office, residency requirement, amending Meridian City Code section one seven two. Regarding city council member qualifications, repealing and replacing Meridian City Code section one seven four regarding city council seat vacancies. Adding a new section to Meridian City Code section one seven eleven regarding Meridian District and Committee, city council districts, adopting a savings clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council, you've heard this ordinance read by title, Mr. Mary, we're just doing the first.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so our intention was because of the significance of this that we do this in three readings, so this is just reading one, first reading.
Okay. You've heard this ordinance read by title, is there anybody that like it written in its entirety? See now, we'll put it on next week for a second reading and public. Hearing. Counsel, if you have a future meeting topics, or do I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn, all in favor seen by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, guys have it, we are adjourned.